All right. Well, good evening, everybody. Welcome to the Peterborough, New Hampshire Select Board Meeting for November 17th, 2020. The sun has gone down this evening. Oh, I might as well introduce this. I'm Tyler Ward. I'll be chairing the meeting this evening. With me is our fellow Select Board members, Bill Taylor and Ed Youngst. We also have Town Administrator Rodney Bartlett, Deputy Town Administrator Nicole McStay. Walker's with us. I see Ally Kreutz is on the line taking notes as usual, and we have Tim Brezvik doing our technical business tonight. If you're watching, you're seeing us on either Facebook, Ustream via the town's website, Comcast Channel 22, or perhaps even the YouTube for the kids, all the kids out there watching on the YouTube. Right. Tonight, Chief Walker will give us an update on COVID-19. We'll discuss a potential draft mask ordinance with public hearing to follow in the near future. And the town, the townhouse has instituted a draft travel policy quarantine and remote work policy. We'll hear an update on that. For new business, we'll appoint or make a motion possibly to appoint Danica Malone to the Southwest Region Planning Commission Brownfields Advisory Committee. Back to some old business, we will discuss the departure of the beloved Rodney Barton from Town Administration and announce his replacement. We have some board and committee appointments for the Master Plan Steering Committee, and we'll review and approve Select Board minutes from October 6th and October 20th. So did I miss anything? Yeah. Excellent. Chief Walker, how have you been?
I've been well, thank you all. So we're a little just sort of an update of where we are. Latest information available through the state, we currently have eight active cases in the town of Peterborough. There have been a total of 34 cumulative cases. The, as you know, I mean, this aid is up, it's not as high as we've been on other days during this, but it is up significantly, which is the trend regionally, nationally, internationally of late as we go forward with this. And to reiterate something that we said last time and led to some of the decisions around, as Tyler mentioned, the policy on travel. What we're seeing is this spread is due primarily to people getting together that hadn't gotten together before. You know, going outside their bubbles, if you wish to call it that, or whatever else. And as we're starting to look at this again, both, you know, locally, regionally, and nationally and internationally, it is something that is of concern. You know, you know, we are fortunate within our school district, that our school district has done very well, our communities have done very well. But it is not something, you know, it's not something we are out of yet, and as we go forward. And just to highlight, one of the things that Tyler had mentioned that was included in the Select Board Packet for this week was a letter that went to all town staff last week from Nicole and myself around some guidelines on travel and quarantine. As you folks may know, the governor recently modified the state's travel guidance. So anybody who travels for nonessential travel outside of the six New England states is required to quarantine for 14 days, or after seven days, they can opt to be tested and test out of that quarantine upon return to New Hampshire. So one of the things that we were very cognizant of here in town government is making sure that we are able to maintain our core services. And, you know, we have been very fortunate through this whole pandemic that although we've had a few people that have been in quarantine, a few folks that have been in isolation, we have been able to maintain all of our services for, you know, for our community. So with the upcoming holiday season and the idea behind a lot of upcoming travel, we went and created this order. So essentially, it just reminds folks that the travel guidance is in place, that quarantine is in place, that there are the opportunities for some employees to work remotely. And again, highlighting for folks here to take precautions all the time. You know, and those precautions are pretty straightforward when it comes down to it. You know, wear a mask, wash your hands, keep your distance, and stay away from large gatherings. So in looking at those things, again, just to reiterate those to our staff as we move into this holiday season. And that pretty much segues right into the next thing on the agenda, which is the draft mask ordinance. So you folks have that, and I guess at this point I'll turn it over to the chairman.
Sounds good. Nicole, do you want to run through what you've pulled together for the ordinance for us to review?
Sure. So I've discussed, after, obviously, this has been coming up for the last few months, whether or not the town should adopt a mask ordinance. I spoke with a number of town managers, town administrators, other public officials around the state, and also reviewed various mask ordinances that have been put in place in various communities. And they really run the gamut. It depends on the community, what type of government they have, whether they're a city or a charter form of government, or they're a town and relying on, essentially, on state statutes for their authority. While we have a charter form of government, our charter doesn't address emergency powers or emergency orders by a selectman. So in this regard, we are relying on state law, particularly RSA 147:1. 147:1 is specific to health officers and health, the health department rules in the things that the, that the health officer is going to be enforcing on the local level. Most of that has to do with businesses, commercial enterprises, restaurants, that sort of thing. And so the power that we're relying on is very specific to commercial, to commercial spaces. And so to, without reading this entire thing, it's a page, and it's a full page of text. The real nuts and bolts of it is that this requires that any business owner who has, who has their doors open to the public must require that patrons of their business, whatever their business is, wear a face covering while they're in there, while they're patronizing their business. This would go for office spaces, any retail, and of course, restaurants. For the most part, this is really mimicking state law. What this does is adds on an additional, it adds a fine to it. So if it's found that there's a restaurant, a business that is not requiring that people follow the state guidelines for the stay-at-home 2.0, or safer-at-home order, that they would be subject to a fine by the town. So that's really the nuts and bolts of it.
Right. And I see it's a, well, it's a $200 fine, but the first instance would be a warning, obviously.
Yep.
And then also 200 for subsequent violations. I think that really gives, gives the power to the businesses that are, that may be finding that they are having difficulty getting all of their patrons to wear masks. And it could be helpful for them in that regard.
So I agree with that. I think it would, it would, it would give them cover, whatever you want to call it, power. And they could be more, you know, more aware of it than they perhaps are now. I thought it was well done, the way Nicole did the research. It was very thorough and the ordinance, I think, is reasonable. I still am in favor of moving ahead with it. Particularly, you know, in the last couple of days, I mean, governors are starting to order stuff that they weren't doing before. I read something this morning that one governor said, you know, even the small towns, they should do, they should have a mask, well, basically a mask ordinance because people, you know, I mean, I, you know, we can't affect individuals, but at least if people want to go to a store to get groceries or drugs or medicines or whatever, you know, they can be assured that people are going to be most likely wearing masks.
Right. And so this, this has nine points in it that cover mostly what Nicole had mentioned. We will have this, this is available for people to look over on the town website. If you go to the agenda for this evening, you'll see the packet for the Select Board Packet attached to this meeting. And we would recommend that people read through this and be prepared for questions. And we'll have a discussion about it at an upcoming Select Board Meeting. I think you mentioned December 1st, possibly, or?
Yeah. So the next steps before you can adopt an emergency ordinance, there's a couple of steps. One of them is, of course, to put it out publicly. We would be posting the ordinance itself on the town's website just by itself, not in, you know, selectman's packet, but right, right up front and center. We'll also be publishing the draft ordinance in the paper. And even though it's not required, we've discussed it, and I think it's, you know, a good practice to hold a public hearing on this. So we won't be taking questions tonight on this. Instead, we'd ask everyone to, you know, submit your questions either via email to selectboard@peterboroughnh.gov or via Facebook, any comments that you might have. And we will be holding a public hearing that will be, it'll be a Zoom, essentially, it'll be a Zoom forum where people will be able to join us on the Zoom chat, the public hearing, and take turns, you know, ask their questions, make their comments, and then the Select Board will, will vote whether or not to adopt this emergency ordinance.
Sounds pretty straightforward.
I got a question.
Yeah.
Chief, is there, is there any evidence, like actual evidence that a mask ordinance right now would make, would change something? I mean, is there evidence to suggest that it would be an effective tool?
I don't know if a mask ordinance would. Masks definitely are. So the, the more people that can wear masks, back down the 10th, the CDC reaching for it, produced a guide and scientific brief on community use of cloth masks to control the spread of SARS-CoV-19, or COVID-2, excuse me, COV-2. And it did talk about the primary transmission being respiratory droplets and the fact that masks do suppress respiratory droplets that an individual gives off, as well as now provides some protection. I do not know if a local ordinance would make a difference or increase mask use. And I don't know if anybody knows that. You know, Nicole, you did the research, but also what I've talked to, the majority of times, the issue is resolved through education, through the opportunity to have a conversation with the person who is not wearing a mask and ask them to wear the mask or remove themselves from the circumstance where they cannot maintain social distance.
I did, I guess, maybe I didn't answer the question right. I, I think everybody, at least everybody here agrees that masks are super important. And I don't have any issue with that. Do we have, is there evidence that there's community transmission because of people not wearing masks, or is it? I mean, is there any evidence of that in Peterborough?
It's, we can't say that for sure in Peterborough, but you can say that statewide, much of the, much of the hotspots that you're seeing now are due to community transmission. That's come out pretty recently, and, you know, the governor's last press conference last week, he discussed that. Benjamin Chan was talking about that yesterday in a press, in an interview that he did with WMUR. So you're, you're definitely seeing lots of evidence of that around the state. At least that's what's been reported. So.
I have a question, Nicole, about the, you know, I know it's for retail and stores and commercial, but would it be, for example, churches? I haven't known, our church, one staff member got, is one of those new cases in, in Peterborough that came up this week, and his wife is very, very, pretty sick. So she's got it also, and the pastor is frustrated about, you know, he puts signs up to wear masks, but people go to church without masks. That's why personally, we don't go, because we know that. We do go for communion after mass is over, and we see people coming out with no masks. So would this ordinance apply to churches and public places like that?
Well, the way that we've written it, it's the public entering any business, including or without limitation, any outdoor area and where business of any sort is conducted, including public transportation, taxis, rideshare vehicles, government buildings must wear a mask. We do not specifically call out religious institutions. So that's, if that's something that the Select Board would want to include, we can certainly, we can certainly include that this is a draft, so we can make changes to it.
Well, there's no evidence that that's where the person got it, but because this individual is there at every mass is involved, it's likely that, you know, it could be that that's where it started. We don't know.
It's, every organization can make that a rule. You know, your, your pastor, or I'm not sure how the, you know, the organization, if it's something that needs to come down from the diocese, or if it's something that you can decide locally. But, you know, the organization can say, this is a rule, you cannot enter without a mask on. And that, that is across the board. That's today. That's without an ordinance. You can do that. Just like, you know, we can do that for the townhouse. I can do that at home. I can say, you know, you can't walk into my front door unless you're wearing a mask. So.
Okay. That's just what's carrying us down.
Yeah. I know it's very difficult for, you know, places, especially, you know, when you think of a place of worship, you want to be very open and very inclusive, and you certainly don't want to turn away anyone on a Sunday morning. But it's, it really is, even after this passes, even if it does say, you know, any place of worship, you must wear a mask, someone is still going to have to stand at the door and enforce that. And we can't, I mean, we've only got so many cops on any given shift. It really is going to come down to every organization doing their bit to make it a rule, to be that first line that says, you have to put a mask on. I can't let you in unless you're wearing a mask. It's, it's about everyone's safety.
I'm hoping that the publicity from the fact that we're even talking about this will, will potentially help make people wake up and realize when they go in a place where there's 50 or more people, that they, they should be wearing masks.
It doesn't even matter if it's 50.
Yeah.
It's great, you know?
Yeah.
But I don't understand it. When I, very rarely do I run into anybody in a store in town. I don't, I'm not, you know, like running into stores constantly, but it's pretty rare that I see somebody without one, and you just wonder, like, what is it? Is this like, why wouldn't you?
Yeah.
Like, that's something I don't understand, and I don't know that. I don't know. Well, I mean, we're certainly not going to have business owners calling the police saying, there's a guy in my store that's not wearing a mask, because they're the ones that get fined.
Well, that's a different situation. So that's a case where, you know, someone who has been told, you know, if the business owner calls the police, the, the police aren't going to find that business owner for, you know, saying, this guy's not wearing a mask, he's in my store. And he, you know, I've asked him to put a mask on or leave, and he's refusing to do so. That's a different situation. That's a case of trespass. That person's no longer welcome there, and calling the police to remove that individual isn't going to trigger a fine on part of the individual, on the part of the business. In fact, you know, the business is doing their best to enforce the ordinance. So no one's going to punish them for that.
But if, say, some well-meaning citizen driving by sees somebody walk into a store without a mask on, and they call the police, and if, I mean, I don't know how the police are supposed to prioritize what they've got going on all day long, every day, or if we've even discussed this with Chief Kennard?
We have. And that's a concern that we have, and that's an absolutely valid concern, you know, is, you know, will this add an additional burden onto the police department who are already overstretched? There's no question about that. That is one of our, that's probably our number one concern regarding this ordinance.
Well, it's mine. So I, my concern is that there's a flood of calls, and the police are running around trying to find people that don't have masks on that may, will probably, by the time they respond, whoever that is, has left the store already. And then they can do nothing about it anyways. But like, what if something is going on, on the other side of town? And, you know, something really bad is happening, and the police are tied up. Try and find somebody that's not wearing a mask.
So what, what I can tell you is so far, the complaints that we have received, you know, either Chief Kennard or myself, through people that are concerned about customers in businesses not wearing masks, is it results in the police going down, having a conversation with that business owner and doing that. We have not had any problems that I am aware of in town with unruly customers refusing to leave when asked to by, by, by an employee in a store, or by a, you know, by a manager or somebody else like that. Typically, the issue has been either store employees who are not wearing masks in almost every one of those cases because they had a medical reason not to. And once explained, the person who made the complaint, or more accurately, the inquiry was satisfied with that, or it has been an individual who was, you know, was in there, maybe wasn't aware, didn't want to, and left peacefully. I don't think we really had any issues with that. And that doesn't mean it couldn't change, or the potential isn't there. But typically, the issue has just been one of education. You can't be in here, you need to leave.
That, that sounds to me like we could have a handle on it. And certainly, as Ed mentioned, the publicity around us considering this and potentially adopting this policy, and Chief Walker's great point about the education factor. And remember, the first instance is a warning, and that warning is an opportunity to have that education piece and to support the businesses that really want these customers. They, I mean, they need these, we, all of our businesses need these customers. And if we can support them in this way and, and not have somebody that's so adamant about not wearing a mask, that they would threaten to not do business in that business, that's on that person, and they're just, you know, they're not a nice person. So, and as Chief Walker said, the, the people will leave, and, and it'll be resolved. So. But we'll have this discussion again at our public hearing, no doubt, and, and all this will come back up again, and we'll, you know, we'll hear from more people and and see what might work best, right?
I do see that there are a couple of questions on Facebook. Again, we'll take those all questions at the public hearing. Not going to address all of them tonight.
I think we have to emphasize again that this is not, this, this ordinance doesn't, I mean, we, we hope that people will, if it's a crowded sidewalk or even outside, that they would wear them. But this is not going after individuals. It's, it's really trying to, I think, the way I look at it, support the business owner's ability to do what they probably want to do anyway. It's have people come in there wearing masks.
Have that power, right?
The, the process now is complaints are, if an individual, if there is an issue with a business or an individual failing to do it, it is all for the Attorney General's Office. So the complaint goes to Attorney General's Office. They do the final investigation. And Chief Kennard can give far more in-depth detail on that. But one thing with this ordinance now is, as with any local ordinance, it makes it a violation of a local rule. So that's why, if you look down under that last bullet point, it discusses the fact that, you know, violators could be sentenced to the Eighth Circuit Court District Division in Jackery for these violations opposed to an enforcement process through the Attorney General's Office.
Has, has anybody asked, like, gone around to business owners and see what they, if they need help with this, and if this would help them? I mean, if this is who we're targeting, then it's their input we should have, right?
Are, are you volunteering for that right now?
Well, I, I mean, I'd be willing to go to, so how many businesses do we have?
Right.
I mean, I would be happy to. I mean, we should hear from them. I can't do it all day, every day, but I'm willing to give in.
Well.
Well, we do have a, we do have a businesses contact list. I'm sure that we can probably send this draft ordinance out to that contact list. And just like everyone else, you know, solicit their, their questions and their comments.
Yeah, that's a good idea.
EDA Coordinator just commented on Facebook that she could do this, or part of this.
Yeah.
There you go. Okay. So good, good, good movement, good action, and a great discussion. Certainly timely and needed discussion. So.
So is there agreement then to move this to a, a public hearing? We'll try to schedule that.
Do we need a motion for that, or?
I think just general assent would be fine.
I, I'm in favor of it going to the public hearing.
Yeah, I'd like to hear from the public, sure.
That's enough, right?
Okay. All right. We'll get this all posted and everything for next week, for the next meeting on December 1st.
All right. Thank you, folks. If there's nothing else, I'm going to bow out to get ready for a fire department training tonight.
Thanks, Chief.
And so Chief touched on the draft travel policy quarantine, that business. Do we need to elaborate more on that?
No, just if you have any questions, happy to answer them.
No, I, I read through it. Anybody have any questions?
No, I read through it. It's very thorough. Well done.
Makes sense. New business. Would anybody like to make, I'll make the motion. Let me go, let me find the, it's in the packet here. Of course, we're all familiar with the work Danica Malone is doing down in the planning department. Off to a great start. I recall during her interview process that she has background in Brownfield's criteria and that sort of thing. So this is, this is a perfect appointment for her, I believe. Yeah.
Yes. Rodney, you've been serving on that committee for a while now, right?
Yes, I've been on that committee for, well, maybe as long as four years. I think Danica is a perfect match for that group. She has local knowledge. As you said, Chairman, she has some background in Brownfield in solid ways. So it's, I think it's a good match.
Great. So, yeah, I'll make a motion that the town of Peterborough hereby nominates Danica Malone, Peterborough's Town Planner, to serve on the Southwest Region Planning Commission's Brownfields Advisory Committee. Yeah. I thought that was going to be a longer sentence. All those in favor?
Hi.
Hi. All right. Unanimous.
Thank you.
Yeah, good one. Thanks for, for working on that all those years, Rodney. Next up, oh, here we have it. All right, back to some old business. So I guess at this point, I'm just going to come right out and say it. I'd like to congratulate Nicole McStay for, for actually accepting the position of Town Administrator going forward, starting January 1st. Of course, it's also bittersweet because we'll, we're, we're losing Rodney Bartlett as our excellent and cable, capable and willing Town Administrator, who's given so much to the town so far. But so Nicole, congratulations, and certainly warranted. Yeah.
Thank you.
And even with all that's gone on in the last couple of years, and, and we're in the middle of a pandemic, and we've, you know, as a board and townspeople, I've heard from people, we've watched you navigate a lot of these difficult situations, and certainly you're up to the task, and your, your experience with the town and in town, and what you've, what you, you bring to the position is, I, for me, I think, is just going to be the best situation for Peterborough going forward. And, and I'm, I'm delighted to, that you accepted the position.
Thank you so much. I really, I can't tell you, I, so I have a really brief statement that I prepared. And I just want to say, I'm so grateful for this promotion. And also, I'm grateful for the trust that you've, that the three of you have put in me to do this job well. And I thank you for the opportunity to continue to serve Peterborough and to give back to the community that has been home to myself and four generations of my family. I also want to thank Barbara Miller and Karen Hatcher, who also supported the secession plan and provided me the opportunity to prove myself capable of taking on the challenges of managing this vibrant town. Rodney, the input that you've given me and the confidence in my work that you've shown during these last five years have been so valuable in helping to me to develop professionally. I can't thank you enough. And I also want to acknowledge Pam Brenner's mentorship. She gave me every opportunity to listen and learn as she conducted day-to-day business of the Town Administrator, and was the first to show confidence in my ability to learn, to take. of the town administrator and was the first to show confidence in my ability to learn, to take on new responsibilities. Her investment in me has played an enormous part of why I'm here today. I also want to thank the team of department directors and staff that I get to work with every day. They're an amazing group of professionals that any community would be incredibly lucky to have. I'm thrilled to be given the opportunity to continue to work with them and service to our residents. And together with the vision and the work that you as a board and all the other volunteers give us, Peterborough is a good town to live in and together I think we'll be able to keep it that way.
Nice.
Thank you so much.
Yeah, thank you.
You know, I just, I, I just have to add my congratulations also. I, uh, we spent a lot of time together, you and I, um, from 15 to 18, when I was on my three-year term, meeting almost every week and, um, uh, I didn't know you before that. Um, when I lived here before, you weren't involved with the town, but, um, there's just no question in my mind that this is the right thing for you, for the town. You've grown so much and Rodney did a great job of, um, implementing the goal we set for him back then and developing this succession plan, which I think makes so much sense. And people, people need to realize that all strong organizations, public and private, uh, corporations that do this are the companies that are, uh, you know, far sighted. They, they know that they, to continue the way things are, they, they should do that kind of work. And, and we did it. You, you all did it. Um, so congratulations. I am thrilled that you've got this opportunity.
Thank you.
I'm hap, I'm happy that you took it. I, I mean, I've been like, what, a year and a half since I've been on the board and I didn't know, you know, except for having formed my own expert opinion on what happens inside the walls of this townhouse until I actually started, until I actually got in here and and started getting into the weeds or whatever term you want to use for that. I, I, I honestly, I'd be horrified if it was anybody else that was going to take this job at this point. There, I, there is no possible way that there's somebody more qualified for the position. It just isn't. And we have somebody that's from the town and that's obviously super important to me and everybody else that, you know, we have somebody that's known this town their entire life and is first of all, willing to do this job. And I believe that, um, Ed and Tyler and I are all going to chip in for, um, you know, complimentary psych eval to see. I was going to say, anybody that takes that job or runs for selectmen definitely should have their head examined first. Uh, but no, to, to be serious, I, I mean, I'm, I'm absolutely thrilled about it. I, I just can't, I, I really have to stand by that. There is not, there can't be a person that's more qualified for the job. And I, I mean, you, I've, I'm convinced after a year and a half, you know, I was just sorry as anyone to see Rodney go. And I, I hope that both of you, Rodney and Nicole, know that I'm still going to be in touch with you 24 hours a day, seven days a week, no matter what. And even after you're retired, Rodney. So, sorry. I understand, day and night.
Mm-hmm.
Well, thank you. Thank you so much.
Yeah, much deserved. Sure.
Thank you.
And, and you, you did touch on it too. You know, Rodney really, he, he had nothing but great things to say and highly recommended you for the position. And it would really, it was, it was, it was kind of easy for us. It was a no-brainer. And, and having worked with you, you've certainly proven it. So.
Thank you.
Great. All right. Well, good luck going forward. No doubt. I mean, I, I don't know if it could get any worse, a pandemic and, and.
Please knock on wood. Please, please knock on wood.
Something like that.
So, yeah, and hopefully you're with us a, a long time, you know?
Thank you. That is my intent.
It'll be longer than any of us three probably. So, okay, great. Now get to work, uh, back to the old business.
Yeah, back to the agenda.
Yeah, boarding committee appointments. I would, I'll just go right out and, uh, I would make a motion that we appoint Sarah Steinberg Heller and Eddie Gomez, AKA Eddie G, to the Master Plan Steering Committee.
I, I, I'll second that. I did go to my first meeting last night of that group and, um, Danica was, was heavily involved and the whole group are, is a great group. They're going to do a great job on this. Um, and that's a, it's not an easy job to do, to, to go through that process, but, um, they have all great ideas. So I'm happy to second that. Um,
Great. Uh, any further discussion or, you know, all in favor?
Aye.
All right, welcome aboard. They already, uh, volunteer. I know Eddie, Eddie works for Drum, which we contract out and so people, you know, they're already involved with town affairs. So that's, that's great. And of course, we've already read the select board minutes from October 6th and October 20th.
Motion to approve those.
Second.
That's good. Yeah. As written, again, Ally did a great job. So I, aye.
Aye.
Great. Any other business?
We do. We have a, we have a motion. Uh, we'll be asking again, the authority to borrow, um, that we discussed earlier. So this is providing authority to file and sign designation of authority to file and sign designation of authorized representative. This is so that, uh, we can apply for, or borrow uh, money for the, uh, Cold Stone Springs project. So it's a somewhat lengthy motion. So I'm just going to read it off. Uh, whereas the town of Peterborough, I believe this is correct, Rodney, and please jump in if I'm putting, filling in the wrong name into the blanks. Whereas the town of Peterborough, after thorough consideration of the nature of its drinking water system needs, hereby determines that the construction of certain works generally described as the Cold Stone Springs Well Project is desirable and in the public interest. And to that end, it is necessary to apply for assistance from the Drinking Water and Groundwater Trust Fund. And whereas the applicant has examined and duly considered the provisions of RSA 485 colon F, which relate to loans from the Drinking Water and Groundwater Trust Fund and deem it to be in the public interest to file a loan application and to authorize other actions in connection therewith. Now therefore be it resolved by the select board, the governing body of said applicant as follows, that the person holding the position of town administrator currently held by Rodney Bartlett is hereby designated as the authorized representative of the applicant for the purpose of filing an application for a loan, furnishing such information, data and documents pertaining to the applicant for a loan as may be required and otherwise act, and I'm inserting language, and any and all other needed and appropriate documents necessary to effectuate the Cold Stone Springs Water Supply Project and otherwise act as the authorized representative of the applicant in connection with the app, this application. And if such loan be made as the designated authorized representative of the applicant responsible for furnishing such information, data and documents pertaining to disbursements for the loan, that if such loan be made, the applicant agrees to repay the loan as stipulated in the loan agreement, that a certified copy of this resolution be included as part of the application for submitted with the loan, that the persons holding the following positions at the time of loan execution are authorized to sign the loan agreement binding the applicant to the terms and conditions therein, that being the town administrator, that if such loan be made, the applicant agrees to make provisions for assuming proper and efficient operation and maintenance of the facilities after completion of the construction thereof. Did I get it right? Yes?
Yes. And just to clarify that, this is also, um, uh, appropriate relative to our state revolving fund loan from DES. Both these, um, loan and grant opportunities are intended to go to Governor and Council, I believe on December 16th. Um, paperwork needs to be done and into this week. That's, that's our goal. And, uh, this will cover all documents necessary for that project.
So moved. Do I have a second? Excellent. Just like that. Uh, I, I have no questions about that. Seems like it's pretty straightforward. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Again, yeah, thanks. Thanks, Rodney.
Nicole, maybe one of your first orders of business as a town administrator would be to, uh, simplify language like that. I think that whole thing could have been said in maybe one short paragraph.
I don't disagree with you. Um, unfortunately, sometimes we're, we're required to use the language that they provide us. So this is one of those cases.
Take care of it.
With that, and now there's no other business, correct?
Was that the only appointment? Wasn't there one more or no?
Just, uh, the Board and Committee, uh, Master Plan Steering Committee, and then Danica to the Brownfield.
Okay. Another one was a new email I saw that didn't make the agenda or something.
Yes, there was one more. It got, it came a little too late. We usually, we close the agenda around noon, noon and one o'clock on Fridays.
Got you. And you can see in the packet, we did receive a lovely thank you letter from Muffy Ames regarding the proclamation read at that last meeting. That's, that was really nice. So. Thank, thank you for that. Thank you. And with that, uh, I'll be wishing everyone a safe and lonely Thanksgiving. But have, have a good time anyway. Motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Yeah, second.
Good night, everyone. Thank you.
Thank you.
Happy Thanksgiving, everyone. If I don't see you or talk to you.
Thank you.
Thank you.